Everybody. I agree.
Everybody's on? Uh, Brandon's not. What? That's your little.
We can't tell if they're on because I don't. I'm making noise.
Sure, mute her. Have you seen this? Which one? You don't turn the sound off. Yeah.
Hey, Joe. How you doing?
Hey, you almost heard me. Thank you. Thanks. Thanks. Well.
All right. Would you please rise? I have asked Commissioner Pearson to lead us in our indication.
Would you bow with me, please? My God, my Father in heaven, we bow before the great Jehovah of the Father of Jesus Christ, thanking you for our blessings that you give to us each day. We ask that your Holy Spirit is here with us today as we attempt to self-govern ourselves. We ask that you be with this court, we'd be to be with this county, with our great state of Texas and the United States of America. We thank you so much for the nation in which we live. We. We thank back on Jesus Christ, Father, and we the two commands that he gave us to love you with all of our heart, soul, mind, and strength, and that is so easy to do. And and I pray that we strive to do that. But the second sometimes gets very tough on us when you said to love our neighbor neighbors as ourselves. Uh, forgive us on our shortcomings. Boy, may we never impose anything on our neighbor that we wouldn't impose on ourselves. Uh, we love you and we thank you for our blessings through Jesus Christ and in his name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pledge to our Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Thank you. You may be seated, but all right. I will call this meeting order at nine oh one A M. On Wednesday, April the twenty fourth. And we have a forum present to all commissioners and myself are present. General announcements. Do we have any general announcements? I have one. That is the next Thursday at noon is the National Day of Prayer. And we will be honoring and celebrating that here at the county courthouse. It will be held inside in Judge Winters courtroom, which is across the hall. That is next Thursday at noon. Okay? Any other announcements? All right. Any public comments? Do we have anybody sign up soon?
No, sir.
No public comments. Very good. All right. Next, we will move to the consent agenda. This items are considered routine by commissioners court will be enacted in one motion. There's no separate discussion on these items unless the county judge or commissioner request an item to be uh removed from content and agenda and considered separately. Are there any items to discuss or remove?
Yes, gentlemen, I got a full item G. One of the permits listed for the fiber installation, they put in future road. Now, if it's not a road, the county don't have jurisdiction over it. So I need to remove that one permit. And it's the first one listed.
All right. We'll remove that one. This is for uh installation of pipe for underground utilities. Uh, and it's going to be a precinct one. So we'll remove that. Any other items of discussion?
Look, I just have a comment on the reports. So we did receive all March uh reports. Well, I'd like to say thank you on that.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the modification to item number G?
Oh.
Is there a second?
Second, Pierce.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed by sign, motion passes. Item number five, discuss consider resolution authorizing the sale of fireworks memorial day holiday from May twenty second to May twenty seventh.
So move Pearson.
Second.
All right. Motion made the second. Any discussion? Uh, certain holidays that uh we we have to approve whether fireworks are sold. Others are are automatic. So all those in favor say aye. Posed like sign, motion passes. Item number six, discuss consider authorizing the county judge to sign agreement with S T S recycling for the removal disposal recycling surplus obsolete or broken electronic equipment as determined by the I T department. This is just a generic agreement that tells them that they will properly recycle and uh and or destroy equipment that we give them. And we will document the the items that we give them. And it's just, uh, it doesn't cost us anything to do that. And they come and pick it out. So uh, is there a motion to approve this contract with agreement with S T S recycling? Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Posed like sign, motion passes. Item number uh seven, discuss consider approval of an upgrade to the Van Zant County financial package. And I believe this is uh our auditor Sandy Hill will be discussing this agenda item.
Good judge, good morning, Commissioner. Well, Van Zant County financial system has been with Net Data since the nineteen nineties. Uh, Net Data served so to the I three vertical recently. And they offer a wide variety of software products. One is a financial software package upgrade called Acufund. Which is a one hundred percent both one hundred percent focused on serving government entities and nonprofits and has been in business for twenty plus years. It brings together what local governments need, a strong core financial management system with added modules of payroll and human source management. Since January, the treasurer's office, the human resource office, and the auditor's office have attended three Zoom demonstrations of the financial package. We also each took a turn at the Soper Springs office so that we can have some hands-on action in the financial package. Uh, we will be one of the first of the forty seven counties to convert to this upgrade software. The financial system will provide all the reports that are required by the local government code. They'll look a little bit different from what we've been already been used to. But it will be my job to ensure that all the the reports that are necessary for the court to make decision will be there for you when you ask for it. And you know, I will ask for your patience during this conversion because it's going to be new for me as well. And as my twenty nine years of service with the county, I've always used Net Data. So uh, it's going to be a change for myself as well. Uh, the good points that we have seen in this program is each elected and appointed official and each employee will have a portal that we I will give access. I will I will give access to what each individual can say. Uh, you as an elected official, that's where you will request your purchase orders, your requisitions. You'll be able to view your reports, your revenue reports, your expenditure reports, anything within the budget will also be um. You'll request your budget through that portal. So all these things are going to be new, but we're excited because um it's it's new technology and we're on the old COBOS system. So we're kind of antiquated. So we're going to bring Van Zant County up into um what we hope to be the the future of technology. Uh, the the human resource and the payroll department will continue to work hand in hand as they currently do. Uh, Acufund will also also a timekeeping system, which Scott has been involved with Taylor. Taylor Diamond is our representative and she is uh she is on Zoom today. She's listening and uh the time system, it will be a new time system, keeping timekeeping system because um right now our time clocks are we have time clock. People clock clock in and we have their crew time on that system. Then we have the Net Data system where they have their time on that system. And sometimes they don't match. Uh, since Jessica's hired a full-time employee, a lot of that has went away. That has not been happening as much. But with this system, it will all be one. The time on the time clock will be what's on the financial records as well. So we're excited about that. Uh, they will also be able to view, you know, at any time they can go in. An employee will be able to go in and view their crew times. They'll be go be able to go in and make a change on their W nine. If uh if they need to change their W nine as a correct, they need to go to W fours. Uh, they can make those changes. So um it's going to be a lot more user friendly for employees as well. Um, no more manual employee files. Jessica will now be able to keep everything uploaded on the computer system. So that'll be a plus for for that'll be a time saving for Jessica as well. So um now the, oh, the the second thing that we liked about the company, which we haven't gotten a price on yet, uh, they're working on us. There is a um, it's not included in the price right now, but we can pay an additional fee where at the end of the year, all the W twos and all the ten ninety nines will be uh Acufund will run in for us. That will not fall on the treasurer's office anymore. Um, they'll produce them, send them, mail them, and uh we we want to have that responsibility to all of our K D. So um I hope you all look at your little package options. Here's the next big question. Yes, it is going to cost the county a little bit of a beat. Um, the implementation cost, which will begin once we if if the court allows Judge Reese to sign the contract will begin. We'll start, we'll we'll do a planning committee, a planning meeting in two weeks. I mean, we're we're talking about getting on this quickly because it's going to take six months at least of um setting up accounts and moving balances. Uh, we hope to go live by October first, which is our uh new fiscal year day. Uh, that's our goal. And I'm not going to say it. We won't. We can't guarantee that, but that's what we're looking at. So we're going to be working in the background with I three articles for for about six months, getting it ready. Uh, the implementation cost to set it up is thirty one thousand four hundred twenty five dollars. Then we will have to buy new time clocks. Time clocks we have now will not work the best. They the total cost of that is fourteen thousand four hundred dollars. Now, the time clocks right now that we have, we have to pay a maintenance fee on those every year, which is um I believe thirteen thirteen thousand eight hundred. Currently, we pay twenty eight thousand for Net Data. And the time clock, time clock maintenance is thirteen thousand eight hundred. So these time clocks, the maintenance will be in the maintenance of the financial package. So the initial cost of the time box will be fourteen four hundred, fourteen thousand four hundred, and then there won't be any more charge. Unless we had to buy more keys, you know, you know. Um, that we have not budgeted for those two costs. So I would have to ask the court, if if you allow us to begin now, uh, we would have to get into our contingency fund and your budget amendment to to move forward. Um, the maintenance fee for the Acufund is thirty seven thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. That would be our annual maintenance fee for now, you know, for so. So um, I guess today, um, Kenny, Jess, if y'all have anything you want to add.
No, I just, in my mind, I think it'd be good for us, especially payroll. Uh, like like she said, currently we have easy clocking over here, everybody clocks in everything. Then we had to pull that over to that data. And there's a lot of questions, like you said, from employees, they look at easy clock and they don't always match with what's on that data as far as what I paid hours I paid. Always go off in that data for that talks, it's a lot of confusion. But now, you know, you said, I mean, it's all going to be one. There won't be that that over here and movement over here coming easy clocking over here and the move that data. There's all kind of issues with that. Uh, a lot of errors could be made, plus that. But and like I said, also the the ten ten nine nines and the W twos and this new package, their process, all that for us. You know, we got into the deal this year where the state changed some rules there at the very end. The ten nine nine was a is a is a big circus there with all the territory statewide. It was a big mess trying to get them submitted on time. So uh, those, in my mind, those are the things that that helped me in those. And I'm sure H R's got a lot of stuff too that's supposed to be better for her. But I think it's a good thing, in my opinion.
And when we went to this training and we got to do the hand on portion, we enter everything into Net Data for employee that want to turn around and then we're everything and into the easy clocking system. And that that's a good system, but it doesn't, they don't work together, the two separate. So it does, it is very confusing for an employee to go in and see their stuff. And it's very confusing for us sometimes to figure out what they're doing. Balances sometimes aren't the same. Thankfully, yes, it has improved. I'm very thankful that we have the uh full-time role that helps with that. But it takes a lot of time and a lot of follow-up to to do those things. And then there's still opportunity for this human key here. And this will prevent that by a lot. Also, it gives more accuracy, more ownership for the employees to be able to have quicker access and get the ready forms updated. It will allow us to have the paperwork. I came to my paperless environment with personal files. And there will be paper forms that do still have to be done. We have the options a lot that will just get scanned in. And then we can can help employee a lot faster and review, do document verifications a lot faster. It's all right there. We can directly just upload whatever we need versus ones in the machine again and send them this here and then send them it out. There's this, it is a step to where we really few counties should already be. And I really think once we get it all rolling, then I agree, we're all, it's going to be steps for all of us to learn and to get through together and you know, but the streamline that we have to have to put in treasurer's office and the auditor's office, put the three of us together. I believe will just make everything a lot better in the long term. And what I've seen from from it so far, I'm I'm very impressed with what they have offered and support that they're willing to give. And then when we got the time clock information, that was an added benefit. I thought if we weren't aware that they could offer that. And then it's a work, our training sessions is one really got into that. And that that'll just be a whole additional that will help us decide to proceed with presenting this to see what we think. So and the other side of the point is we feel like by us being one of the first ones to say, okay, we're we're ready to to upgrade. Uh, we have C D Duffer and we have Victoria Hartman in the Soper Springs office. And we'll we'll have more hands-on training than if they're trying to convert all five counties at one time. You know, they're going to be dealing with us. And so we will have, we will get more one-on-one time with Net Data. We have been, we were, we were the first person on Net Data and they signed up their region. So uh, they're excited that we uh have that we're entertaining the idea. And we hope that the court will uh approve it for us and they're excited as well. We are excited. So um, if you have any questions.
Yeah, will will you still have paper applications or?
Yes, we uh we don't have to switch. We can eventually add applications to our system.
Right.
But we can still do paper applications. All I'd like to say is go to where it's an online applicant process.
Well, you could now, could you go online with a paper application if you need?
We could, we could do both.
Okay.
Our website now could be added, where we could have, and then be able to do applications online and submit that through our end-up family, things that we already have.
Total cost is eighty three five sixty five?
No, actually, what what she said, our current Net Data and time clock system is running right around right around forty two thousand a year. And the new system will loan us thirty around thirty eight thousand a year. So actually, year to year, we we will be going down how much we spend. What the cost is going to be is about forty two thousand dollars to buy the the conversion cost in uh thirty uh seven, thirty one.
Thirty one.
Four four twenty five, and then the new time clock to fourteen four hundred. And there is potential that we could actually uh sell our existing time clocks and get some money back in that regard. So as far as going against the contingency, um, it would be closer to forty two thousand, right? I guess forty five thousand, somewhere around there. We would need to do. I have uh sat in on the demonstrations and uh worked with it some, and I'm I'm very impressed. And uh, right now, if I want to find out if a bill is paying, I have access to the system. It's quicker for me to walk down and ask Sandy to look it up than it is for me to figure out how to do it. So uh, and and I will be saving Sandy a lot of time by in that regard. So but yes, I'm I'm uh impressed with it. And I have another note somewhere, which is the the on the implementation we started. But what my concern is this year's budget, when we, I guess we would continue to do our budget for this year or for the next year will be done in that the Net Data software. And then we would uh that would get done generally by September and then uh October first is when we're looking at cutting over.
We're hoping, yes, that's our goal.
Okay.
We will have to, we will have to complete the twenty five budget on Net Data.
Right.
Uh, but now we will convert it to the new system once we have that.
Right. And the advantage is the company's located in Soper Springs, so they're they're close by and uh, you know, we have the relationship with them too. So.
And Taylor, did you have anything you wanted to say this morning? This is Taylor Diamond.
Hi, um, as Sandy said, my name is Taylor Diamond. I'm with I three, or as most of you know, it says Net Data. Um, I just wanted to say that we're very excited to engage Van Zant County in this upgrade. As Sandy said, you guys are one of our, you know, very longtime customers, one of our first customers for the financial package. Um, and with such close proximity to our local office, we think that you guys are the perfect um match to go through this conversion with us, this upgrade path. Um, the financial and the H R departments, like she said, have seen some really in-depth comparisons between the old Net Data and the new Acufund program, as well as some hands-on demonstrations. And this will, of course, be followed by some actual training, um, many hours of training to make sure everybody's comfortable. Our local team can come out and do the training in person, which will be nice. And of course, we can help anybody um on the department head end to see your budgets and and your reports and all that stuff too. So we just think that um such close proximity and such a long-lasting relationship, we really value this conversion. And we really value um you guys being one of the first to take this upgrade. As Sandy said, during the conversion, it will be just Van Zant County being converted, the only county at that time. Um, that way, all of our focus is on Van Zant, and that way, that it all goes very smoothly. So I just wanted to say, um, I appreciate your time and looking at us and and listening to us. So I look forward to to the conversion.
Okay. Thank you, Ted. All right. Is there any more discussion? Is uh, is there a motion to approve? I guess, do you want to uh? Uh, there's a motion this right now need to talk about uh paying it through contingency for the uh for the uh conversion and the time clocks. conversion and the time clocks?
And I have, uh, I failed to mention, I have sent the contract to, uh, Tonda, and she had reviewed it and given her okay on the contract.
Okay. So, is there, is there a motion to upgrade, uh, Van Zant County, uh, financial package to the AccuFund? Uh, and that the, uh, the conversion and time clock costs would be charged, uh, would come from the contingency fund?
So may.
Is there a second?
Second version.
All right, is there any further discussion?
I'd like to make a comment, I've got a lot of respect for our auditor, and, um, and she does an excellent job, and she keeps that contingency fund under lock and key. And if she's saying it's okay to take it out of that, you know, trust me, it's gonna be okay.
Well, the contingency fund isn't the only fund that keeps under lock and key.
Well, she especially does that.
All right, any further discussion? All who's in favor, say aye. opposed like sign, motion passes. Thank you, Taylor.
Thank you, Taylor.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge, shine your light.
You bet. All right, item number eight, discuss, consider appoint Deborah Johnson to the Van Zant Historical Commission Board. Is there anybody here to represent the Historical Commission Board?
We should probably do that every time.
Okay, huh, so.
Okay, well, uh, it's my motion, uh, I, uh, I can table it, or I can make a motion to, uh, appoint Deborah Johnson to the commi-, uh, the Historical Commission. Let's go ahead, yeah.
All right, or I, I make that motion. All right, is there a second? Second, all right. Um, Deborah Johnson, i- and that is the same Deborah Johnson, that was the city secretary for, uh, city of Canton, or just retired?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, any further discussion? All who's in favor, say aye. opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number nine, discuss and consider applying, uh, supplying the Edgewood Fire Department with new radios.
Yes, sir, I put that, I put this item on here. The, um, our discussion in the past on our new radio system was that we would not supply any, uh, fire department that was, their funds were coming from another taxing entity. We would not supply them with radios, all the volunteer, the vol- true volunteer fire departments, we would supply them. And, uh, I made a mistake, uh, back when, when we were doing this, and I'll tell you why I made a mistake. Uh, being from Will's Point, I knew how Will's Point's, uh, fire department was set up prior to becoming an E S D. It was a, it was Will Point Fire Station, they owned the building. Uh, the city of Will's Point owned the building, the city of Will's Point owned all the equipment. The city, uh, of Will's Point, uh, city council made all governing governmental decisions as far as the fire department. Now, there was a five oh three, uh, group of men called the Will Point Volunteer Firemen. And so, that, that manned the fire station, uh, city of Will's Point didn't have any paid people. And so, I made a bad assumption that, uh, Edgewood was set up the same way. I, I checked with John, the city administrator of Kent, of Van, he's here. And the Van Fire Department is set up the way Will's Point was. And so, but Edgewood is not, the, the building is owned by the Edgewood Volunteer Firemen. Uh, the equipment is owned by the Edgewood Volunteer Firemen, with the exception of one piece of equipment that the city of Edgewood bought years ago and donated it to the fire department, but it's still technically in the city of Will, uh, city of Edgewood's name. Uh, I checked with the city administrator from Edgewood, they make no governmental decisions about that fire department. Uh, they, they do give the city, the, uh, fire department a stipend, just exactly the way the county does, to cover their, some of their costs that they do within the city limits of Edgewood. So, that's all on my ear, no, that, that was my mistake, right? And so, I've come back today to approach the, the court and, uh, and confess my mistakes. And see if the court would reconsider, uh, including Edgewood Volunteer Fire Department and with the other fire departments that we, that we are gonna supply the radios to. And, and we're only supplying the radios, uh, still when we do this, to fire departments that do not, uh, have a revenue source, a taxing revenue source. So, uh, uh, the, uh, we've checked with them, we, I've checked with the Edgewood. Their list of, of what they need is not as much as what we thought they would need. And so, uh, it would be, uh, six mobile units that go in their apparatus, and then a twelve of, uh, I get that hard vision, there's six mobiles.
Six mobiles.
And twelve portable systems, uh, so, and, and, and at, and at this time, one base. So, uh, I make that motion that we, uh, do that, uh, and we'll see what goes mean.
I'll second it. Okay, and, and how will we fund?
Time we're funding the rest of it, how does Alfa?
I have a question about the bases, is, is there anybody there at the fire department, when they're dispatched, out to, to, to work the base?
Uh, I, I'm, there, there is, there is it. I checked with that, I asked that question, on a, on a day-to-day deal? Uh, no, he said, uh, he said, uh, and this is, I'm gonna assume, and forgive me for assuming, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this is the case with all of the volunteer firemen. But the only time that that's an exception to it is if you have a major disaster. If you, like, when they had the, the tornadoes and stuff. He said, we did have somebody there, uh, at the fire station at that time, monitoring that radio system and dispatching people to the next location, uh, Virgil, but I'll tell you, uh, the way, you, the way, way I listed it, I didn't know about the base stations when I listed this agenda item. And so, right now, the only thing we can do is, is vote on yes to supply the radios or not to, but we're going into a workshop after this, and, uh, where we can all discuss, uh, the, uh, the base stations. And then, then see, then we'll have to come back at another court and say, yeah, we need to carry on with these base units or not, do the base and, so. But that was the information, to answer your question, I found out.
The fire station Edgewood serves as our emergency operations center, and that's where the base station comes into play at on a more planned basis. Other than that, and whenever they get a call, and the call, as men are coming to the station, the first truck's rolled, they can walk into the base station and radio and see what additional equipment's needed from there.
Uh.
I think we're just talking about approving buying the radios, and then we'll get into that, that, what we're talking about now, that.
Yeah.
Motion, second.
Back to your cost, uh, uh, Judge, the, uh.
Well, by twelve portable, uh, six mobiles and one control station comes up fifty-nine thousand four hundred.
Yes, sir, that's not quite correct, I was gonna say, uh, we have checked with all of the volunteer fire departments, and we've had fourteen, uh, portables, uh, that have been pledged to give back, that, that we all, we over, uh.
I've got forty-two.
Fourteen, I mean, forty-three? Okay, well, we're not gonna have to buy any, we're not gonna have to buy any of the portable.
So, it'd just be the mobile?
Yes, sir, you'd be looking at six mobiles, and, and, and the base, and, and Commissioner Loprad sent out a deal on that, it's come up at least just shy of thirty thousand, uh. And, and we're gonna say, if we don't have to have all these, this, this is stuff that's gonna have to get into this workshop discussion. But, uh, we're, we're gonna be able to cut some cost on some of these radios that I need.
We're not gonna spend, I don't think I'm spending any of that.
So.
According to this, according to what they've told me, but.
Yeah, I followed up on that, and you had some errors on there, that's, that's kinda what keeps talking about. But it did work out, where two departments were willing to give radios up for Edgewood, so Edgewood's got the portable available, that's why I run these numbers on them. You gotta figure twenty-nine thousand two hundred forty-nine dollars and nine cents to cover the six mobiles and bases.
But, but there, there, there again, that's a, a, our, some of that stuff once, it's cussing the workshop, but not here, because it's not on the agenda. But the, you're looking at the name-hood of thirty thousand dollars that, that we would cover out of either Alfa interest or regular Alfa funds, uh.
We can cover it through regular Alfa, because it's part of the R P, and the price is there, so it doesn't matter to you, it's interest to regular Alfa.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Barton, you, you said, all right, is there any further discussion? So, the motion is purchase, uh, radios for, uh, Edgewood Fire Departments in the amount, uh, or, supply them, whether we purchase them or not, with twelve portable, six mobiles, and one control station.
That's correct.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All who's in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number ten, discuss and consider selling constable of precinct three.
Yes, sir, I put this on here for Constable Jeff Carnes, he got, uh, Jeff got a, a new, uh, uh, vehicle, patrol unit. And when they rigged that thing out, they had to remove the, the back seat, and it's, it's one of these things that, that we need to get rid of, but because we're a government body, it's hard to do. So, we, he's got this back seat that's in the way, that's being stored. And, uh, I put this on here, hoping that we could get it onto the Renee Bates auction that virtual, that, uh, Commissioner Melton has got going at this time, but we didn't make it. So, we can still get approval, it's being stored as a precinct three barn right now. But it's just the rear seat of that thing, there's no application for it, there's no need in keeping it. And I, and I've talked to Renee Bates, and I think Commissioner Loprad has got something that may be coming up here pretty soon, and so we'll store it there. But I'll go ahead and make a motion that we, uh, the court authorizes the disposal of the, of the rear seat of the new, uh, patrol unit, uh.
The, the, the cover?
Yes, yes, sir, and, and it'll never go back in it, when, all that had to be stripped out, and it, and it's got, there's a, there's still a rear seat in it, but it's plastic, because that's where, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, it's, it's the one we just purchased. And, uh, and the, now the rear seat is all plastic, in case they have to put a, a, they take somebody in custody. There's still a rear seat and safety restraints and all that, but the, 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 thankfully, it removes. I make a motion, we'll, we'll, put this in, in next upcoming Renee Bates auction for disposal.
All right, motion made, second, any further discussion? All who's in favor, say aye. opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number eleven, discuss, consider approval of bond for Lisa Hutcheson, first assistant auditor in the amount of five thousand dollars.
So, move version.
So, any further discussion? All who's in favor, say aye. opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number twelve, can sit, discuss, consider, approve, moving the date of the June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four Regular Commission Court meeting to June, Tuesday, June the eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. All right, could put that, set on here? It just said Commissioners Court, it didn't have a, a.
I can, I'll motion. Yeah, I can support it.
Okay. Uh, and the reason being is, uh, June nineteenth is a holiday, it's Juneteenth, and, uh, we won't be meeting, we won't be here. So, we're gonna move it to Tuesday, June eighteenth. So, is there a motion to do that?
Motion, second.
All right, any further discussion? All who's in favor, say aye. opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number thirteen, discuss, consider accepting a check from U S Hydro X L L C in the amount of three thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars and sixty-five cents for damage to Van Zant County Road, twenty-four thirteen, located in precinct two.
Yes, uh, Commissioners, uh, Judge, this is my road over there, the Hydro X did some damage over there, and they were, they were good enough to, to, uh, supply me with the, uh, money to, to repair the road. So, I make a motion that we accept this check of three thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars and sixty-three cents. Second, version.
All right, any further discussion? All who's in favor, say aye. opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number fourteen, discuss, consider awarding road and bridge materials bids for the contract period of May first, twenty twenty-four through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, like our auditor, Sandy.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner again. Uh, first, I'd like to say thank you to Nicole, Ms. My assistant, that had a specially prepared, obviously, promoting for us, she's, she put the bids out, and she did a great job, so I'd like to tell her thank you for her work.
If she did all the work, she shouldn't have hired her.
She's very organized.
She is.
She's done a great job. Um, the road bridge materials were mailed, and we received and opened them on March the twenty-eighth at five P M for the F Y twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget year. Uh, Ms. Nick's completed the bid tabulations for each project, and we presented those tabulations to you in a workshop held on April tenth, twenty twenty-four. Now, you have a bid summation in front of you, you should, it should have been in the packets, uh, of what was approved during the workshop. Uh, if, if we made a, if you see anything that you think we, uh, made an error, or didn't understand it correctly, please let us know now. Um, but as it stands, it was determined in the workshop that we did not receive any delivered bids on the S S M material, the A S P P M material, and the C P R four material. It's my understanding, later on in the agenda, we're gonna ask to rebid those articles, because we didn't receive any bids on those. We did receive undelivered, but not delivered prices. Uh, and Commissioner Loprad, you were gonna explore the options on the emulsion, because we, my assistant, we shared the prices on emulsion, and I believe you made the decision that we weren't easy to have product, so we're not gonna award that at this time, just the emulsion. So, uh, I did not bring a copy of the summation with me to get out, but if you wanna drop by our office, I know someone here who has a road bridge bid, we, we, we'd be happy to.
I do have a question, is someone here from Austin Patrol?
Well, that's gonna be the next.
Okay, nice to hear.
We're on material fire.
All right.
So, we're not going out to bid on the, there was only one company that didn't give delivered prices on the, on the A S B P M and all that, right? Which was?
Thanks.
So, are we doing a whole other rebid on it, or they just giving us a bid for delivered, so everybody's gonna rebid again?
Just those products will be rebid again.
And only on the delivered price of it?
Yes, only the delivered product, we, we, we would do another bid on.
So, do we need to reject those others, I mean, how, how do you?
Yeah, except for.
I understand that, sir, uh, how do we make this motion, uh, if we, uh, we make it as, as, bring it or, uh, accept everything with the exception of the things that were?
Of those, yes, of the S S M, A S P P M, the C P R four, and the motion.
Okay, I make that motion, we accept the bid with the exception of the, of the delivered S S M, A S P P M, and C P R four.
You doing this?
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
What about the delivered press conference?
Uh, on the undelivered recycle press conference, is that what you're asking? We did not, uh, receive any undelivered bids on one and three fours, and one and one four, we only received delivered bids on those, so. Do you guys think we're bid?
I think we'll need to, we'll have to get that on another agenda, it's not on this.
All right, and then a motion made.
Well, but.
But.
We're going to modify that. Is, do I need to reject something else, Sandy, that's what I, there's no bid, we're not, we can't accept something that's not bid on?
Well, there won't be an award to the press conference, there's no one bid.
So there's nothing to reject.
Okay, that's what I.
I'm sorry. On the inch and a quarter, yes.
I'm modifying my motion to deny the also the bid on the inch and three quarter crush concrete. Virgil, second. Did that cover it, sir? No.
It's to deny the bid for the inch and three quarter, undelivered. And then the three quarter did not have any base, so we give that in case, but the nine of the area would be for the.
Inch and a quarter.
So I I I. I made my bid to include what you just said, inch and a quarter, undelivered, crush concrete. I agree, and I apologize.
All right. Is there is there any further discussion?
Virgil will have to accept my amendment. If he accepts my.
I accept it, right, you're, I do accept that amendment. I second that, but I just. I don't know if I'm the only one that's got big city. Big city crush. Rest of the precincts have got, we're the only one that got big cities.
The big city with the lower bidder on you.
I guess they like. They make a lot of scenes, whatever.
Now, Judge, you got a second motion to say.
All right, uh, I would finish the discussion. If so, all those in favor say aye. I suppose like sign. Motion passes. Item number fifteen, discuss, consider awarding road and bridge fuel bid. For the contract period of June first, twenty twenty four to May thirty first, twenty twenty five.
Okay, we received fuel bids in the same in the same manner, and this year we have a new vendor for the road bridge fuel. Uh, Mr. Philip Jones. Uh, he is with Austin Patrol Yolts. And he has joined us today to answer any questions or concerns. Uh, you asked me during the workshop to invite him to the court, so if you have any questions or concerns, should transition to a new vendor. We're excited to have a new vendor for the building.
Yeah, my question, where are you dispatching these trucks at?
We're actually. It's often, we just came off the front. We're actually Douglas, Trupin, the base, and Sherman, Texas. And then we had Grantberry also, and we had the oil plant in Powder Lake. And other areas throughout, and then often just purchased Douglas. So we would be. We would dispatch it out of our external office or our grand current, so we have lots of. And we have, uh, just for company sake, we do, not counting Warren County, Fifth County, Grayson County. Uh, Monte County. We cover a lot of these counties across that northern section, say. And also, you know, we do, we're pretty first off, so whatever, whatever needs, if you had to order your own till now. We can do it that way, or we can install tank monitors and do it. This Fifth County, when we got a bid in Fifth County. I've been with, was, we came to Douglas like ten years ago. When we got a bid of Fifth County, they ordered their own product as as such. And then we went and installed tank monitors on their tanks, and we just do heat fill, and we we've had that bid. Five or six years now, and they're they're more than happy with it. They just don't bother to go out and come by.
If we ordered fuel today, about what would the time period be before we actually received it?
We we usually sell about forty eight hour and that's forty eight hours. We more than likely try and get it. Less time than that, but to give everybody a little comforting. And give everybody the room to work forty eight hours in case something comes up, but forty five, I would say seventy five percent of time.
Is there an extra cost for the tank monitor?
No, that's a convenience for us. That's why we do it because. By doing that, then we can schedule our drivers out, our boss driver to loop loop those lists, the tank monitors. And they can schedule them. They're like, hey, we're gonna be down in Kent area today. We can get these tanks while we're down there along with these other customers. So the I, we don't, we don't charge, I mean, we would. If you guys took the delay from us, or if we lost a bid next year, we would have your tank drivers back, but I mean. Convenience wise, for we don't charge, because it's more efficient for our drivers to be able to schedule that around with other things. I mean, like. For a while, we have Bob's Hill in, uh, Arnold, Oklahoma. And Third County, uh, precincts like to use the non ethanol gas.
So is there any notification when you're gonna come and refill using the tank monitors?
Okay, it was just kind of, well, I mean, during business hours, not running from there. Ten o'clock night, hopefully, you know, unless there's an emergency or something, probably, but I guess it's kind of. You know, delivering like living the pain. I mean, it's whatever, whatever you got to talk about. I mean, I understand. That you've been with DUCO always for several years. You know, we're we're trying to expand our footprint. And keep keeping them fully, mostly, but but just the bottom of this is kind of. This A, everybody is wanting more, uh, playgrounds and bigger facilities. So we've got enough business there. We're trying to spread it out.
DUCO's been good to us, but I'll have to say for many years, DUCO's are only bitter. And and for so everybody knows, we're looking at strictly markup price. None of these people can give us. A price that we're gonna, we'll sell you diesel for two dollars and fifty cents gallon for the rest of the year. That don't work. They they get a wholesale price every day. And they look at that and and whatever that wholesale price is that day that they buy it for, they bring it to us. But they did tell us what their markup is. And this company here, their markup is this year is less than DUCO. And for us spending somebody else's money, we may love DUCO. But we also are responsible for taking care of your money, so we have, we. We we will go with the with the best bid on your price on the money that the taxpayers are giving us.
All right, any further discussion? Do we have, do we have a motion?
No, we don't.
We got a motion.
All right, is there a motion?
All motion.
Second.
Motion made second.
So what what, uh?
Let me let me motion out with the clarification that we can get the fuel within a forty eight hour period. Unless some unforeseen circumstance.
And and if you feel, you know, our doctor in the US, if we're actually, maybe we'd rather have them watch it. Just reach out, I think my, I know this, I know you have my email. And I'll get that set up and have our maintenance guys come and install those monitors or order. You know, just reach out again, whatever, we're we're willing to have to locate areas.
So my motion is we'll go with Austin Fuels. This year.
All right, and with forty eight hour, right over the standard.
All right, okay, hold on just a second. We had Brandon at first and then Chad, and then we've got Brandon and Keith.
I already said that and I agree to this, Ken.
Just keep it with with Chad.
Okay.
All right. Do we need the motion red back? If not, all those in favor say aye. I suppose like sign. Motion passes. Item number sixteen. Uh, discuss, consider approval of retiring items unaccounted for during the March fourteenth, twenty twenty four inventory audit. Of the Van Zandt County Sheriff's Office. We're back to Santa, our county auditor. Very good.
On April the fifth, twenty twenty four, you all received an email concerning the. You all received a letter from my office of an inventory count that we completed at Sheriff's Department on all of their cars. Um, it read. Eight vehicles that are tagged in the current inventory system were not located. These vehicles have been unaccounted for in past audits due to the age of the Ford Crown Victorious, which we have known. We have to assume the county has disposed of them in the past and were never removed from the inventory. And I told Chef Carter that we would address the court for transparency before we would actually remove these cars from the inventory. Nicole has reached out to the Taxation Collection Office. And they have confirmed that the cars are still in our name. But they're not here. And they have not been registered or tagged since.
Two thousand eleven.
Two thousand eleven, so. You know, I don't know what. I'm sure these cars were sold or something and in the past, you know, they were.
Wrecked.
Right.
Turned to the insurance company.
And we just have not. Find our inventory out of, I'm paying. I don't really have any in Safari, but we need to remove those cars. We are getting a new sheriff. And I don't want to have have him tagged with vehicles that he was. That don't actually happen. Nicole and Lisa actually went and laid eyes on every vehicle that is out there. Uh, the ones that weren't there, the officer who were very kind and came by and they went outside. And we, so we have viewed all of them. They're there, and I believe the sheriff is happy with all of it.
Yes, ma'am, correct.
The only thing was missing was was Crown Vix on them?
Yes, there were two. Two nineteen ninety eight Crown Vix, there are one two thousand three Crown Vix. Two two thousand four Crown Vix, one two thousand six, and one two thousand seven, one two thousand eight.
And we have searched our office through every file that we have. Trying to find bits and pieces of what happened to these vehicles and we've just come up empty, so.
Well, I can tell you, I can, I I, me personally, I know of. Probably at least three or four that went to the salvage yard, that came through this court, that the court approved. Way prior to you. It would have been back when the. Dale was there.
And Nicole is very, uh. She's very, uh, she's a bulldog on inventory now, so we we have taken care of that part.
Well, that was my next question, and thank you. It's obvious for me, somebody need to do a better job on it, and I might be somebody.
All right, is there a motion to approve the removing of these vehicles from our inventory?
Some move.
Is there a second? All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Well, item number seventeen, discuss, consider rebidding. The road and bridge materials bids for the delivered. Uh, SSM, ASPPM and CPR dash four. For the contract period May first, twenty twenty four through April thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
So move Pearson.
Do we need to add another one?
I don't know if you can or not. I'd love to. I I'd love to add it.
All right, so Commissioner Pearson makes the motions or second?
Second.
Okay, for the items listed in the agenda. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. I suppose like sign, motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion made, all those in favor say aye. Motion passes. We are adjourned at nine fifteen six. Let's come back back here to dinner.